Welcome to the special meeting of the Council of the Whole with the topic being the temporary outdoor dining regulation. The purpose for this discussion in any and all business via remote participation is in accordance with Chapter 40A of the Massachusetts General Laws and Governor Baker's emergency order dating March 12, 2020. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the City Council will be conducted via remote participation as great as possible.
But I'll listen to you.
Of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the process real time via technology means. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner: the Zoom platform, PBD Access television, and the minutes will be recorded by the city's stenographer. If you'll please rise for a moment of silence on the Fledge of Allegiance. Now, the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, which stands one nation under God, visible, justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for attending. At this time, I'll now actually turn it over to the mayor for some opening remarks regarding the ordinance that we're looking at adopting. Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President, and it's great to be with all of you. I hope all of you are doing well, you and your family. And I just wanted to ask to make sure that everybody has their device muted so there's no backup or outside noise. I really appreciate the Council working to coordinate this meeting tonight, a special meeting just on this one topic that I think is extremely important topic that we all do. And the goal tonight is to develop a process for outdoor seating, to try to provide some assistance to our restaurants, eateries, social clubs, and try to streamline a process so that they can get up and operating and allow for outdoor seating, just to afford them the opportunity to continue to do their business, continue to have their employees working, and just to provide an opportunity for those that are struggling during this time to maybe bring in some additional business. I think all of us know, you've all reached out to me at one point or another advocating for our restaurants. We've been very appreciative of their work. So many are out there trying to make a living, doing the very best they can. And now that things are starting to open up, we want to make sure we provide any opportunity, be proactive, and try to help these businesses take the next step. So appreciate you working with us tonight to make this happen. With this goal in mind, we put together a committee of city officials that I did want to recognize, a terrific group to kind of work to come up with the proposal that we have tonight. Of course, our Health Director Sharon Cameron, Police Chief Tom Griffin, Fire Chief Joe Daly, Al Tellarico, our Building Inspector, Attorney Don Khan, and unfortunately, Don's not able to join us tonight. He had to leave for a family matter, but he won't be able to be here tonight, but he's very familiar with this document. Darryl McCarthy from the Liquor Licensing Board representing them, and then we had Ryan Melville, who was a key member of this, very knowledgeable on these matters, was very helpful. And then we received input from Julie Daigle from the Chamber of Commerce, as well as Deanne Healy from PBD Main Streets, and some businesses that have reached out to us. So we're bringing forward tonight a proposed regulation to streamline the process and provide for temporary outdoor dining. And this would only be on a temporary basis. This would be, this would run through November 1st. We've used that date just to coincide with the Governor's date on this as well. So this is something that will just be for this timeframe running from today to November 1st. And anything permanent that would take place, if there's something that a restaurant or club is looking to do permanent, that has to still run through the regular course. This is just for something temporary to help those businesses. But all of you have the regulations in front of you, the agreement that's been provided. Really, it breaks down into a couple of key points. One is the application to be completed by that restaurant and or club. Number two, there would be plans and diagrams that would have to be reviewed by the department heads and signed off. And I think on the second page, you see that the Police Department, the Fire Department, Building Inspector, Human Services Department, Community Development, and Treasurer. And of course, Kurt Bellevance has been instrumental. He's the one that helped put this together. He's on the call as well, and I wanted to thank him and recognize him for his work. But all of those department heads would then have to sign off after the application's been presented to me, make sure everybody's comfortable, and then we would send it to the Liquor Licensing Board. The Liquor Licensing Board plays an important role in this, and I'm very appreciative. We have the members on today. Fred Mertag, who is the Chair of the Committee, Barry Sinewitz, both of them have been on for a number of years and are very familiar with the process. And newly elected member is Jim Leakos, and all of you know Jim. So all of those three, I think, will be a terrific board for us, but once we do the internal review, do the internal sign-offs, it would then go to the Liquor Board for their review and their sign-off. The Governor, on a temporary basis, has released the Board from having a butter's notices, advertising requirements. So many of these could be just a simple agreement or approved by the Board through email, and then they can get on their way. If there's something that the Liquor Licensing Board wants to review further, they certainly have the right and the ability to have a hearing and discuss this proposal for them. So I think this accomplishes a number of goals. It allows us to streamline the process, to avoid having these restaurants and clubs and eateries go through multiple layers of government, go through multiple hearings, and allows us to just move forward in a quicker fashion to try to get these businesses up and running with the outdoor seating. It will allow us to work in small groups, to be creative. Some of these will be very easy. Certainly, there are a number of larger restaurants at the North Shore Mall or on our highways that will be very easy. Some tables, maybe a tent, and those can move forward pretty quickly. Of course, in our downtown area, we're going to have to be more creative, come up with some solutions and ways for it to work for as many people that are interested. And I know a number of restaurants, social clubs, eateries are interested. There are some that are not, that are just going to wait a little bit longer, that doesn't really work for them, and that's understandable. But I know that there's a number of restaurants, eateries, social clubs that are very interested. And the good part about this is, if this doesn't work, if there's a, something, one of the restaurants or eateries that doesn't work, we can just shut that down and look at other options. But I think this just allows us to work more quickly and more creatively and try to come up with something that works. So I wanted to present that today. Kurt Bellevance is available. I know we have a number of people that are listening in as well. Ryan Melville was, as I said, instrumental in making this happen, very knowledgeable. So between all of us, I think we can answer questions, and I think we could take that step now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. The mayor's alluding to the documents. I just wanted to get them received. And if it's okay with you, Mr. President, for the sake of efficiency, I was going to make that one motion, the suspension of the rules to receive late communications, 1 through 5, and 7 through 10, and refer to this matter, so will?
You heard the motion by Councilman McGinn, seeing no discussion on the motion. Roll call vote.
Counselor Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Sullis.
Yes.
Yeah.
Gould.
Yes.
Yeah.
Charis.
Yes.
Nanny Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Melville.
Yeah.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozanow.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Councilman McGinn, you fill up the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. All set.
Any other councilors have questions so far? Councilman Melville.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted, for just a point of information for everybody on the call, there's pending legislation that's coming through that's going to deal with some of this, but some of the details that are in the actual, together for, for example, the tents, those are going to be solidified in some legislation, probably 50%, probably 50% of the parking lot. And also, they're going to, through the legislature, allow mixed drinks to go. So that's going to essentially allow a licensee to sell beer, wine, and mixed drinks to go. There's going to be some specific regulations about the amount that they can sell to go, how that can be transported, but going through the legislature right now. Additional to that, the date will be November 1st. I'm hearing a lot of echo. But, so I just wanted to make sure I let everybody know that this is going to go transition from a Governor's executive order to a legislative thing that we can reference going forward. So just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Melville. Any further questions or comments? Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, are we still on schedule for June 8th for these businesses to be able to have outdoor dining?
Thanks, Councilor Turco. My understanding is that the Governor is expected Saturday to announce when Phase 2 will be open. It could open as early as Monday, June 8th. I know that's what many people are hoping for, or shortly thereafter. But my understanding is that the announcement from the Governor will come Saturday as to when Phase 2 will begin.
Thank you. And with regard to the process, we've streamlined it as much as we humanly possibly could streamline it, but what about the use of public property? Would that have to come back before the Council? And I'll give you, for instance, the green area next to Brody's. I know that Mike Voder would love to use that parcel. I support him using that parcel. Does that require a full vote of the Council? Is there any liability to the city for using that parcel? Is there any talk of using that parcel to try to? I want to make this as easy as possible for these businesses. It's been far too long, and we need to get them up and running with as little red tape as possible. And I just wonder about if they would, depending on what parcels they choose, or are we going to choose those parcels?
Yep, good question. So the intention, the intent would be for that to be allowed potentially, again, with the sign-off of all the boards. I would like that to be a part of this regulation, this temporary regulation to November 1st. So if there was a public property, maybe in front of the courthouse or in front of sports collectibles that is city-owned, or the Brody's property, which is city-owned as well, that we would be able to work with potential people that are interested in that. So, no, I would like that to not have to come back to the different boards and commissions, that that would be something that, again, would be worked out internally, just for this short period of time, and we can be creative and try to make the work for people.
Thank you. That's what I was hoping you would say, Mayor. And now, last question for you. If, in fact, we do have some of those downtown businesses use the courthouse and they may have to cross Main Street, is there any intention on a police detail assigned to that area during business hours to, for the safety of the workers as well as the pedestrians and, you know, the residents that are using those restaurants?
Yep. If we go down that road and allow now the, open up those areas, yeah, we would need to have a police officer presence for that. And I know Chief Griffin is supportive of that and would help, would help make that happen. But yeah, if we go that route and open up some of that public property, we would need some assistance from the police.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. President, I'm sure you're aware, but you know there's several business owners that, restaurant owners that are in on the call, if it's your determination that you'd like to hear from some of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just following up on Counselor Turco's question as well, I'd just like to also advocate if there's city property that's not adjacent to some of these businesses, for that to be in the consideration as well, so that we don't have to come back. So if there were an opportunity, maybe at Brooksbury or something, you know, of that nature, that we would think to include that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Welton. Counselor O'Neal.
I didn't have my, thank you, Mr. President. I didn't have my hand up.
I apologize. Counselor Sassla.
Thank you, Council President. If I could just take a step back, I want to make sure I understand, we've got a lot of late communications, and I want to make sure I understand what we're looking at. Just so I understand, the late, the late number one communication, I assume that was an early draft, and then today we got late seven, which I believe was a redraft, and then I believe late is the final product. Is that correct? Just so I understand.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. So picking up on some of the questions that previous councilors brought up, you know, when it comes to private property, I guess it's pretty much laid out, and it's a little bit easier to discern as far as who can use it and they can use it. I did have some questions as far as going back to the public, public property, and I'm going to use the courthouse because it's not a bad situation, or else the property of Al Forbes Sports Collectibles. So how do we go about, you know, let's say eight restaurants downtown PBD, you have Tex Mex, and you got Brothers. I'm just curious, was there a vision on how this is going to go forward? Because I think even for the restaurant owners who I spoke to and who are listening also, if it's private property, that's fine, but if it's public property, what is the process, A, to get it done quickly, or B, to decide who's going to use it? Is it going to be week to week? Is it going to be share it? So I got to assume there was some vision of the committee, and I'd like to try and get beneath that if we could.
Yes, thank you, Counsel. Good question. So, you know, we've been kind of discussing some ideas with different business owners and internally as a committee, and, you know, we've talked about a food court concept that maybe that could be shared space for a number of different restaurants and eateries. But I think that's what, that's the work ahead of us, to try to see, one, who is interested, and, two, how that can work. You know, I know there's some downtown that are definitely very interested, others are not. So there would be a few that I think would want to try to make something happen, but that was one idea we talked about, maybe a food court type of setup. Certainly, a lot of space over in front of the courthouse, additional space over in front of sports collectibles that I think, you know, could be used in a variety of ways to help as many businesses as we can. But I think that's, time is going to have to help us develop that as we move forward.
Sure. And as far as alcohol, what do we see with that? As far as if...
Jimmy, can you hear me?
If it's a private property, obviously, if it's a private property, that's a little bit different, but when you're starting to use public property and there's open containers and things like that, is that something that we're embracing? Is that something that we want? Is that something we don't want? Where are we with that? And then, on a follow-up, regarding, further question, if we do police details, is that going to be the responsibility of the restaurant, or how's that going to work?
Yep, all good questions. So, yeah, that would have to be something that would be part of the work with the different owners. It might be a situation where city contributes some, and all the restaurants contribute a portion of money to the police detail. I think those are things we can work out in the future. We want to, you know, we know people are struggling and want to get back to business, so we want to try to help them, and I think there's some ways we can do that.
All right.
So the first question, maybe, maybe Counselor Melville, can you maybe touch on...
Okay, let's see.
Counselor, Counselor Melville, maybe you can touch on the beer and wine and how that's going to work. I know the Governor, you kind of outlined a little bit, but I know that's in serious discussions.
No. We can hear Mr. Mertag.
Okay. How you doing, Ryan?
Very good.
Good.
So with regards to the beer and, so the idea from the Restaurant Association all the way through the regulatory and the legislature and Governor's Office has been to give as much flexibility to municipalities to allow restaurants to operate in a unique way with the pandemic. So a couple of things have happened. First, the, through a legislative, an act of the legislature, restaurants were allowed to sell beer and wine to go as long as it was with a food purchase. So their receipt would have to indicate the actual food purchase and the alcohol on one receipt. Additional, as I just stated before, is there's going to be, and moved through the legislature, hopefully by Monday, that will allow mixed drinks to be sold to go as well. The reason I bring this up is it's important because there are, not just in PBD, but throughout the state, you have a lot of downtowns that are asking the same questions we're asking about narrow sidewalks, so certain restaurants are going to be at a competitive disadvantage if they don't have a parking lot that they could use and utilize for a tent or for outdoor seating. Also, a lot of municipalities are struggling with the idea of shutting down a main thoroughfare, so a Main Street is not necessarily what a lot of communities want to do. So what that brings you to is you get now some flexibility through this legislation that you can have a secondary location where, say, my wife goes to Petrelli's, I go to Brody's or wherever downtown, and we can be at a second place, sit down, eat, consume our food and any alcohol that we should purchase. So that is, that's some flexibility that's there. You know, I think it does, I would agree with the mayor, that it's something that would be filtered out based on which businesses want to use it. I also think that, you know, you, part of that, you would have a setup where if you're sitting down to eat, it's not one of these that you could go to a package store and then bring your, buy food and sit down. It would have to be with your meal. So essentially, you're just extending the outdoor seating experience to another location where it's more suitable, that there is social spacing, that people are not on top of each other, because, again, we're all, and I always, I like to reiterate, is that there are all these that are being done based on the current pandemic. So, but that's, that's the flexibility that there's, that is coming from some of these acts, whether it be the orders of the Governor or the legislature for specific to go alcohol for on-premise licensees.
Thank you, Counselor Melville. And the, I'll just have a couple last comments. The only thing I'm concerned about is that if we're going to offer public parcels, whether it be downtown or Tilly's or Brooksbury Farm, make sure that we get it, let everyone know about it, because obviously, the worst thing would be is people not to know about it. As best as we can do that and give them, you know, not 24 hours, but, you know, maybe 72 hours. I think the restaurant owners that are interested have the air to the wall, but we have to make sure that everyone has that same opportunity. And my final, actually, two last questions regarding parking lots. You know, we've got, what is the situation as far as, obviously, we're trying to open up the parking lots to increase the capacity so they can, they can do a good business. Is there anything in this document regarding the parking, as far as a concern I might have, is parking, if they took them on the parking lot up, and now we're pushing them on to places where parking normally isn't done or allowed, or it goes on to their neighbor's property, and now we have two different businesses that are arguing? So is that, is that addressed, anyone in here?
Well, Counselor, this is going to be a work in progress. We don't have every answer right now to how this is going to work for each different restaurant. That's going to have to be developed, as I've mentioned, over time. In terms of the parking lots, I don't really want to use the parking lots. I think those need to be, as much as we can, continue to be used for parking so that people can come to those areas. So I'm hoping not to utilize those parking spaces for these outdoor eateries. The public space at the different locations downtown, I think, can be helpful, but I'm, you know, I'm not anticipating using the Foster Street lot or some of the other, you know, the lots maybe behind the courthouse, although it might work for the little diner back there. So, you know, we want to try to keep as many parking spaces open as we can to encourage people to drive down and go to those places. So that's, that's something we're trying to avoid.
I apologize. Actually, I meant private lot, private businesses, not public. I apologize. Private businesses that want to use their parking now as a outdoor tents or outdoor dining, is there, is there anything as far as making sure percentage that's not, you know, is there a certain percentage, or as a case-by-case basis? I'm just hearing a lot out there that Restaurant A wants to use their parking lot, and I know that Restaurant A might have an issue where they might go to the next business who's closed at night, or to a C Street that's no parking right now. So I didn't mean municipal lots, I meant the business's parking lot itself.
Sorry, I misunderstood. That's a good question. I, yeah, I think it's going to have to be on a case-by-case basis, you know, and that's why this will allow us to work individually and try to come up with a plan that the Health Department, the police, the fire, everybody would be comfortable with. We obviously have to make sure that fire departments have access to all the buildings that, you know, we meet the handicap accessibility requirements and some parking as well. So, yeah, I think that's why it's important that this will be a group effort. Everybody's going to have to sign off on it, and we have to make sure that it meets all the requirements for the individual departments, because I'm hoping and intending that if there's an issue that the Police Department sees, or that the Health Department sees, that they would bring that forward, and then that operation would have to be shut down, or we try to tweak it in a better way. So, yeah, I think it's an individual, case-by-case basis.
Thank you. And the final question I had was, so regarding the public lands, the public properties, where if we have more than one business owner who's interested in that, who is the final deciding factor, just so I understand and the business owners understand? How will that work? Will it be a committee, or you have the final say? I just want to make sure I understand that.
Well, I've been saying a lot that Sharon Cameron makes the final decisions, but pretty much everything lately, but no, that would be, that would be my decision.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, can you hear me?
Yes. Hello, Mr. Mertag.
Okay, I apologize. I'm not so sure you can hear me, but you're doing well. Start of water, keep going. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Oh, that's quite all right. Absolutely.
You guys.
And further comment from the Council? Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. And through you to Counselor Sassla, and I think probably Counselor Melville, I think Counselor Sassla, you had some good questions about, you know, responsibility for alcohol in certain locations, right? So if it's in a public location, you know, who has responsibility for oversight there? And what, late communication five seemed to provide a little bit of information with respect to that on the second page of that. Item four, so these are the guidelines for extension of premises to patio or outdoor areas. And I guess this is where I'll ask for Counselor Melville's guidance, is number four says the outdoor area must be contiguous to the licensed premises with either, A, a clear view from the area from inside the premises, or alternatively, B, the licensee may commit to providing management personnel dedicated to the area. How I read that is, you know, if we were going with this kind of arrangement where there was some shared space, using the example of the Courthouse Plaza, that there'd be an obligation on the part of the, of the license holder to have some staff there to oversee it. It couldn't be, so, but I don't know if that's going to be part of the relaxed regulation. So I guess that's where I'd have to defer to Counselor Melville. Counselor Melville.
Yeah, so essentially, yeah, that would not be considered. The reason is you'd have, that's where you run into an issue of viability. So you don't want to have, what you, the reason that you would want to have a centralized location for where the open container law is no longer in effect, and it's sanctioned by the city where you, this would be a secondary location to buy your food, sit down and consume it, is you don't want to have overlapping restaurants using the same area. That's a bad idea. It's a bad idea for a number of reasons. First, it's not legal. There is legislation, this part of that legislation that's coming through on Monday specifically notes that it's the, they reference the envelope of the building, so they're saying that this, this relaxation is for the front of the building, where essentially the storefront or what is reasonable with that storefront. So that's like if you want to go into parking spaces that were on the street, so non-traditional locations where you would, would set up tables for a restaurant, not, they're not indicating that you would go across a Main Street and set up in a parking lot, or that you would have an overlapping area where a number of different restaurants would be operating. That's where... That's where, you know, the discussion, that's where the the off premise, being able to purchase the product, go to that secondary location to consume it is that's the relief that the legislature put into this to to allow municipalities that flexibility. You know, the other thing I would I would just want to remind the council is if if we're like similar to like the Greenway in Boston that's been operating for a number of years, a lot of those businesses that are in there, they pull what's called one day special alcohol permits. And that's for if it was a private lot or our pop up pubs do that. So if you had a business that had access to an area like that, they wouldn't extend their current liquor license to that location. They would actually go get a special permit through the Liquor License Commission in Pevy to operate at that location. So that's that's there's solutions to a lot of these issues. It's just you don't want overlapping premises because that's where the liability becomes a problem. It really becomes a problem for the restaurant because their own liquor liability insurance becomes null and void if they're if they're operating on somebody else's premise. So.
So, Mr. President, just overall, you know, I'm fully supportive of this. I agree agree with the mayor that we're going to have to work on a lot of these on a case by case basis. And I also agree with the kind of how he summarized it with respect to restaurants' interest in participating. The operators I've spoken with, some some are, some aren't. So I think it's going to be, we're just going to have to take them as they come, see what we can work out. And I and I think that the framework that's be that's before us allows for that. I also think that, you know, like one of the things that we may want to consider in our thinking here is, you know, with respect to these spaces, again, using that courthouse area as a as an example, with social distancing, I mean, you can't you're not actually going to be able to go to the restaurant and wait for your table. So you're, you know, if you get there early, your maybe your option is to walk around or 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 sit in the car, you know, and and, you know, maybe that's not the best. So some of those public spaces might end up being best utilized as a place where you can wait in a pleasant area for the for the table that in the downtown. So that's just an alternative thought with respect to how some of those public spaces might might come into play. And again, I'm I'm I know this is we're really talking about a a citywide thing here. So I don't want to I don't want to narrow it down too much here, the conversation to the downtown. But but I think as the mayor pointed out, that's maybe where a number of the challenges are going to be because we're of the space constraints. So again, overall, I am supportive of the initiative and when the time comes, Mr. President, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Thank you, Council McGinn. Council Cheko.
Sorry about that, Mr. President. I couldn't unmute myself. I had a couple of questions that were actually texted into me and I'm going to actually ask these to Mr. Bella Vance because I know he's wanted to answer a few and maybe he can jump in with the answers to some previous questions after I ask these. And this might be a co-question for the Board of Health for Sharon Cameron. Bathrooms facilities, have we have we addressed bathroom facilities as far as porta potties and the potential for that if we're doing, you know, even adjacent or contiguous lots? Do we want these people going into the restaurant to use the bathroom or do we do we want outside facilities? And I'll ask that to Mr. Bella Vance and Ms. Cameron, whoever would like to answer first. Kurt, you're on mute still.
Mr. Bella Vance.
You muted, Kurt.
I'm sorry. I'm actually going to I would defer that to the health department. I think there's there are certain guidelines and regulations in place for using restrooms. So that would that would really fall into the Board of Health. So I'll I'll pass that one on to Sharon.
Ms. Cameron.
Yes. So the guidance that we have been given through the state health department is that this type of situation does envision that the patrons will use the restrooms of the establishment. So they would in fact be going into the restaurant to use the bathrooms. And that's part of why the guidance that they have issued requires provisions for cleaning those interior spaces that patrons will be traversing to to get back to and from the bathrooms.
Thank you, Ms. Cameron. I appreciate the answer. Mr. Bella Vance, my next question that was sent to me was, has there already been there been any consideration for outdoor outdoor bars of any sort? Whether those people want to set up beer gardens or anything like that? And and that would be for Commissioner Talarico, you, Mr. Bella Vance, or whoever can answer that question. But I know there's been some thought from some of the breweries at least that they would like to set up an outdoor area with a bar so they're not running back and forth to the establishment. And I don't know the legality of that.
From what I've read so far, beer gardens would be allowed to open in phase two as long as it's accompanied by food. So there would be have to would have to be a food component as part of that. And I believe you, they can't be standing. It has to be sitting. So it would be a sitting service. That's what I've read so far. I believe that would be something I definitely want to get, at least be very clear on that is before they they prepare to open.
Okay. And then the last thing that was sent to me was entertainment. Has anybody addressed the idea of entertainment? I believe that the mall has a set area for outdoor entertainment. I don't know how Council McGinn or anybody else would feel about outdoor entertainment in the downtown. And I just don't know if it's been addressed.
I know we that we included that as part of the as part of the application. But it isn't anything that would be getting approval at that time. So it would that would be a case by case basis as well. We don't want to give a blanket approval for entertainment for everyone. So that would be that would also be a case by case.
Thank you very much. That's all, Mr. President.
Any further questions, the comments from the council, Mrs. Cameron?
Yeah, Councilor Melville and I had a little bit of discussion this afternoon about the requirements for breweries. And he clarified for me that the the regulation at the state level or the director from the governor's office does envision that breweries who have a food service permit would be allowed to open as part of the phase two openings. The breweries that we have here in Pevy do not have food establishment permits. So although they bring in other licensed vendors like food trucks or pop up food service, they themselves do not possess a food permit, so they would not be eligible to open as part of this initial phase two reopening.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Council O'Neill.
And thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to comment, it's clear this is a complicated issue. In theory, when you you hear about it, it seems simple, but there's so many different facets. And especially you can tell with some of the questions that are being asked by council members and people sending in texts. But I just want to, you know, offer my support. This is definitely work in progress. We're trying to give our local restaurants another tool in their tool belt, if you will, to to be successful. And I have full confidence in that the departments, that all of the major players that would touch this these businesses, liquor, health, fire, police, so on, so on, are going to be involved in in evaluating it. So I'm confident that we'll work through this and for the businesses that want to take part in this program. But I just want to offer my support and thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Council O'Neill. Any further questions from the council? I just had Council Welton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Council Melville, just following up on Ms. Cameron's last statement. I know the it sounds like the breweries want to be part of phase two. With a potential use of city property for food court type setup, would it be permissible for those breweries to, you know, provide beer at those locations through the city? Just if you could provide any clarification on that, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to forward you guys right to the governor's order that was included in one of the late communications. It's pretty clear on the phases. The governor's order is specific to dice, sit down restaurant service. So they're actively trying to they're actively addressing that while knowingly ignoring any sort of like buy and go options. So like, you know, they're they're trying to stop like an international festival operation essentially. So is is what they're trying is it's or a festival activity. That's what I that's exactly the way it was put to me on a call from their office is that that was what they were trying to avoid. So if the the differentiation on phase two versus phase four for any sort of hospitality industry is based on food. So that that is not a determination anybody outside of the opening governor's opening committee had made, that that's the that's the determination. So they actually cite this the specific section of law in which a municipality can grant. And Pevy, we call it a food operations permit, a food operated permit. Most most communities call them common victual licenses. So they're very specific on that. And that's so that's basically the differentiating of the two. I have I would not even dare to comment on what made that decision. But my assumption is is that they were worried about multiple food vendors and multiple people in a small area.
Mr. President, if I may. Mr. President.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mertag. One moment. You have to unmute yourself.
Okay, I'll set.
Yep.
It looks to me like this is a case of where one size doesn't fit all. So almost every applicant will have a different set of regulations restrictions.
Yes, I think I think that's correct, Mr. Mertag. I think that's why this is it's going to be some, as I said, that are going to be very easy. Others are going to be, you know, going to have to be flexible with and be more creative. But it is, it's going to be each restaurant, each owner is going to be operating under somewhat different rules and regulations in terms of, you know, the the size, how many tables, you know, things of that nature. So, yeah, this is going to be a work in progress.
May, if I may say, will all these these decisions will be made up with a combination of fire department, police, public safety, et cetera? Is that right?
Yes, it will be a combination of my office, the health department, police, fire, building inspector, community development. It will be a combination of all of us working together, coming to an agreement as to how it's going to work. And then we'd send it over to the liquor licensing board for final approval.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions from the council? Seeing none, I I have a few. What do you anticipate the turnaround time being? So if the applicant applies, let's say on on a Tuesday, what do you envision the turnaround time between getting the department head to review and approve and then being issued a permit?
Well, certainly the the purpose of this is to try to streamline it, make it fast, to make to allow people to get up and operating very quickly. So and that's why I think, you know, it's going to kind of be run through community development in my office, Kurt and his team, Chris Ryder, Daryl, kind of all of us working together to try to to move these pretty quickly. But that's why we wanted to take this action so that come next week, depending on what the governor says, we can help these restaurants up pretty quickly. I don't want to give a definite time or say we'll take two days or three days, but the whole purpose of this is to move pretty rapidly.
But you're just envisioning a couple of days as far as because normally the process would be weeks.
Oh, yeah, it could be weeks and, you know, even months sometimes depending on hearings. So, yeah, we want to make this limit this to, you know, a small amount of days to get this going.
And my next question, will there be a process to let the council know when the applicant has applied for this special permit as well as when the applicant has been either approved or denied this special permit? I think that way us as a council will be aware if there is a complaint or if if there's a neighbor issue, we can instantaneously just let them know, yes, they do have permission or no, they don't, they shouldn't be doing that. And we can kind of help guide the process.
Yep, that's a good that's a good question, good point. You know, I I would want to make sure that all the information is provided to the council. We could do that on a weekly basis to get the information as to who's applied, who we're working with, kind of a status update, certainly those who have been approved. But we can get that over to Allison Danforth, our clerk, and provide weekly updates as to where we stand.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. My last question regarding insurance and liability from the city's standpoint, I know in section nine of the communication that we got from the state, it says the city shall be named as an additional insured under the policyholder of the restaurant that's applying. Who's going to make sure that they have applied for that extra insurance to add the city as far as their liability goes?
Yep, another good question. And and I can just say that I'm not going to sign off on any final document until Don Kahn, the attorney, says that he's comfortable that the city is protected. So, yeah, that's going to be a requirement and make sure that the city is protected on any operation.
As a couple of other councillors had already mentioned, I'm in I'm in full favor of this. Those were the questions I had regarding at least the process goes. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're protected liability wise. We're informed as a council so that we can help any residents that have concerns. But I I think the ultimate goal for this whole entire process is to streamline it so that the businesses can reopen and reestablish and we can continue to move forward. One last question I I do have is fraternal organizations, the Italian Club, the Elks, the AOH, are those covered in this memorandum as well? All they have to do is apply?
Yes, thank you. And and the where things stand right now, it's it's been mentioned a bit, only the places that serve food and alcohol will be part of phase two. If it's just alcohol, so if there's some clubs, I know certain clubs in the in the city, they're only serving alcohol, they wouldn't be allowed under the governor's phase two plan. They'd have to wait till phase three or phase four. You know, maybe those clubs connect with a one of our yeah, caterers catering business, maybe that can work in some way that they can partner together. But in terms of just straight alcohol, they won't be eligible for phase two under the governor's plan. They'd have to wait till a later phase.
Okay.
But I want the social clubs, I want the social the social clubs need to be a part of this fully. I've already had a couple of reached out that are very interested in in working with us to make something happen. So, yeah, we want to provide support for them as well because I know they've been struggling to pay their bills and things. So, yeah, this is meant to be restaurants, eateries, social clubs. Everybody that.
Council Melville, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just want to add in there that that doesn't mean just because the governor the governor's order just says they can't open, doesn't mean they can't apply now. Phase four does arise, they can be up and running, whatever they want to do. They can go through the process now so they're not, you know, they don't have to wait for a day of approval. So once the governor allows the phase four operations begin, they can they can get right up and running.
And one other question, is there any curfews for licenses or do they go by what their already pre-established order was?
Yeah, we're not, we wouldn't be looking to add hours.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any further questions or comment from the council?
Mr. President.
Council Gold.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the mayor. Mayor, thank you for pulling this together. Do you intend to use any municipal roads with parklets or has there been any talk about shutting off a breakdown lane or anything to that degree?
No, we're going to try to stay away from that. I just feel that that could create some safety issues that I don't think we can take on right now. We have to leave, you know, we need to have full access to the streets and we need to have full access to the sidewalk. So, you know, we're 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 trying to think in different directions. That's why I thought the community space, some of the public spaces might work better for us. So, but it is another, again, it'll be a case by case basis and that could happen, but I I'm not sure yet.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Seeing no further questions or comment from the panelists? Counselor McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would move to approve City of PBD temporary outdoor dining regulations in the form taken in late communications eight, late communication number 10. So.
Counselor McGinn, is that to a motion to adopt under, uh, emergency preamble?
Um, so.
If we, if we do it under an emergency preamble, then it doesn't have to be advertised.
Yeah, I, I think, um, under the, I, so I guess this is a question to, I wish the city solicitor was able to participate. I, I don't think we're actually changing zoning here. I think it's a temporary suspension. So I'm, I, I think my, my understanding, uh, in the place we're at right now is that if we go to approve this, the mayor signs it, that it would go into effect, that it...
Yes, if I could jump in, um, Mr. McGinn and, uh, Mr. Rozigal. Yes, we, we've been given authority and the governor's waived some of those, uh, advertisement requirements, so we can move forward with an emergency preamble and have that voted today.
Right, I, I guess, Mr. Mayor, the, um, the question is, under any circum, under the current circumstance, would any, would there be an advertising requirement? Because we're not actually changing zoning, we're just temporarily suspending.
My feeling, my feeling is no, we do not.
I don't think so either. I mean, the, um, emergency preamble is generally when we feel that there's a health or safety issue. Um, I'm not sure this necessarily would fall under that. But I mean, I, if, 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 Mr. President, you feel it's prudent to vote on an emergency preamble, we, we can do that just for, just so that we're, uh, if, if you think that we need that coverage.
Well, i- if, if we don't need to advertise according to the governor's, um, ruling, then I don't think we have to go to that extra step. That, that was the piece that I wanted to try to avoid in the initial stage.
Right. So my, again, my understanding, the motion I made, um, once approved by the council and signed by the mayor, would put this into effect. And the, the last statement of late communication number eight, section 14, it says the effective date. Uh, these rules were adopted at a special meeting of the PBD City Council on June 4th, 2020, and became effective at that time.
Perfect. You heard the motion by Council McGinn? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Councilor Welton?
Yes.
Saflaw?
Yes.
Muthulis?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozigal?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you very much, everyone. Uh, I think this is very important. The Council McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an unrelated matter, but I just, it's convenient. We had a late communication number six, which I'd like to move to receive and refer to finance on the motion. It's a time-sensitive matter, so, uh, if we were, if, if we can take action on that this evening.
You heard the motion by Council McGinn, roll call vote?
Councilor Welton?
Yes.
Saflaw?
Yes.
Muthulis?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes, for clarification, um, Councilor McGinn, this is to refer to finance, to receive and refer to finance, correct?
That's correct, Councilman McGinn.
Thank you. Uh, that would be yes, thank you.
Turco?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozigal?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Council President? Yes, um, just, uh, we're moving, we're moving rapidly here, uh, and I just had a quick question with the mayor, president. Mr. Mayor, I did see on the front page of the Salem News yesterday regarding, uh, deadline for COVID release. It looked like PBD was looking for four-point, might be able to line up for 4.7 million. I was just curious, uh, does it look like we're gonna be getting that as, gonna meet the deadlines? How does that look? If you, and I know, if you don't know, I understand, I just wanted to ask you. It was fresh in my mind, it was on the front page yesterday's paper, a lot of money out there.
Yes, we were, we were allotted 4.9 million. Uh, however, I just want to be very clear, that doesn't mean we're going to get 4.9 million. What that means is it's available to us, we're working on our numbers now, we have to submit to the state. And it is very, uh, there's only a few specific areas that we can get reimbursement for now. Um, and it has to be COVID-related. So there's some police costs and, uh, some, uh, work we're doing to the different buildings, uh, that we're trying, some, um, improvements we're trying to make to the buildings to, to better protect our employees and things. So there'd be things that we're doing that would be, uh, we'd be able to get reimbursement on that 4.9 million. So that work's taking place now. We're obviously gonna try to get every penny that we're entitled to, but it's very strict as to what that money can be used for. And, uh, so we're working on that now.
Thank you. And, and Council President, I know we talked, talked last week about, uh, getting some help for Allison. Technically, uh, do we know if that's gonna be available for the hearing, for the, uh, next council, uh, meeting next week?
I have not heard anything from the mayor's office.
I'm sorry, what, what was that on?
We were, two weeks, uh, two meetings ago, there was a question about getting, uh, city clerk, uh, some help with technical aspects. In other words...
You mean, yeah, the motion that was for an IT person, they'll be at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, council.
Let me, Council McGinn, I believe has something.
Council McGinn?
Motion to adjourn, so moved.
You heard the motion, roll call vote?
Councilor Welton?
Yes.
Saflaw?
Yes.
Muthulis?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozigal? Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.